Twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three Lewiston City Council regular meeting to order. Number two on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand with me while Mr. Doug Welsh, BHW Commander, and David Jacks lead us in the pledge.
Did you cover your marks for Councilman? Councilman, I-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hate to say it, but that's usually my favorite part of the meeting. Moving on to number three, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I would remind the public that comments related to the public hearings on the agenda tonight must wait until those public hearings, and you will be given a chance to speak during that time. Are there any citizen comments here this evening? Carrie, were you going to read the one or-
That is for the public hearing, so I'll read it during the testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no citizen comments, we will move on to item number four, presentations. Letter A is Veterans of Foreign Wars State Award, awards, excuse me. This is a presentation of the state Veterans of Foreign Wars Paramedic of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and Dispatcher of the Year awards. Gentlemen?
Yes, we have three awards this evening. All three of these awards are for the state of Idaho, so all the communities and VFW posts of the state of Idaho submit nominees, and they are ruled before award. And we're looking at our nominees for these three categories were people that received the state award. And is Mark Nugent here? Mark, if you can come forward. I have to apologize, I have to put my glasses on. Otherwise, I have to read them off the floor, and I ordered that. Okay, this is from the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. VFW National Dispatcher Award awarded to Public Safety Health Communications Specialist Mark Nugent in recognition and sincere appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the Lewiston Police Department. During Mark Nugent's outstanding career, he has maintained a record of highly professional and exemplary service to the community and to the nation. His extraordinary commitment clearly illustrates the proud core values and traditions of the dispatch profession, further highlighting the degree of admiration and respect of his peers and the local public he serves. Dispatcher Mark Nugent is truly an exceptional example of all dispatchers, and this honor reflects the proud ideals and standards of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. Signed by Tim Morland, Commander in Chief, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. Congratulations.
Excuse me, gosh.
Our second award is to Battalion Chief David Chenault. Can you come forward? The VFW National Emergency Medical Technician EMT Award awarded to Battalion Chief David Chenault in recognition and utmost appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the city of Lewiston. During David Chenault's outstanding career, he has demonstrated a record of extraordinary and courageous service to the community and to the nation. His exceptional devotion is illustrated of the esteemed core values and traditions of the profession of emergency responders, further evidenced by the high degree of admiration and respect for both his peers and the local public he served. Battalion Chief Chenault is truly a premier example of all the EMTs, and his honor reflects the proudest ideals and values of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. Signed by Timothy Morland, Commander in Chief. Travis, don't sit down. Mark. Travis Michael. A VFW National Firefighter Award awarded to Fire Chief Travis Michael Bus in recognition and utmost appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the city of Lewiston. During Travis Michael Bus's outstanding career, he has displayed an exceptional record of exemplary and courageous service in the community and in the nation. His extraordinary commitment is in keeping with the esteemed core values and traditions of the firefighting profession, further manifested by the high degree of admiration and respect of both of his peers and local public he serves. Fire Chief Travis Michael Bus is truly a role model for all firefighters, and his honor reflects and the proudest ideals of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. Signed by Timothy Morland, Commander in Chief, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well deserved on all accounts, and thank you to our VFW for your service to our country. Item number B on our agenda under presentations is Beautiful Downtown Lewiston. This is a presentation by Brenda Morgan regarding the activities financed with city funds. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Absolutely. So my name is Brenda Morgan. I am the Executive Director for Beautiful Downtown Lewiston. I'm not quite sure how I was supposed to follow up those amazing awards. It's very well deserved to all three. Good evening. I want to first thank everybody for their time. I just wanted to give a brief update on the success of Beautiful Downtown Lewiston for the 2022 calendar year. I will briefly touch over some of the contract items and later on be giving you the detailed written reports so that you don't have to hear me speak for more than a few minutes. The primary focus for BDL has been to self-sustain with the support of our partners, event sponsorships, in-kind trade, and volunteer hours. The funds that the city provides as part of our service contract will continue to be complementary to those income sources. The work identified in this contract reflects the downtown master plan as well as our participation in our community strategic plan. As part of our economic revitalization leadership, we have consistently been the point of contact for investor and commercial tenant recruitment. We are a resource for property owners and a clearinghouse who can point entrepreneurs in the right direction when they need information. Because of this, there is renewed energy in our downtown corridor, and we have seen a spike in new businesses filling some of those vacant spaces. I'm not sure if you guys have been downtown recently, but there is a buzz downtown, and it is very exciting to see. There are plenty more in the incubation stages getting ready to bring their goods and services to our community. We've encouraged private investment in downtown through our event Downtown Property Tours that was recently held on April 18th. This is one of the first years that we have absolutely sold out, taking 32 people, a combination of realtors, investors, and community members through both residential and commercial spaces, as well as an update on the spaces that have been recently completed, such as TAP that will be opening this summer. In the past, we have provided grants to small businesses to update their signage, building facade, or other business updates. Based on the feedback from business owners along with our Board of Directors, we feel it is more beneficial to small businesses to provide our partners with rental equipment, event materials, and sponsorships free of charge or for in-kind trade. This approach has allowed new businesses, who would normally not have access to these materials or resources, the ability to run an event more robustly. It also gives them an opportunity to participate in our events and be a partner of BDL. In addition to providing a solid foundation for businesses in our district, we also host community events that I'm sure you're all familiar with, Crazy Days, which is coming up soon, Art Walk that we host in October, and Small Business Saturday in November. These events, whose focus is foot traffic into local businesses, bring an average of 2,200 people to downtown for the duration of our events. This gives vendors or a pop-up business the chance to see our thriving downtown and also encourages them to invest in any vacant spaces. A big part of our events is the marketing associated with them. Along with our website, we also invest in both digital and printed publications that span our region. Information is being distributed to tourists, community members, and the general public in various areas through those avenues. Our focus has been and will continue to be on local shopping, local dining, and local events. We always ask for feedback on these elements in order to do better year after year. We pride ourselves in hosting family-friendly events that are inclusive to all of our community. Some of these events are Ladies' Day Out, Sound Downtown Summer Concert Series, and Pumpkin Palooza, which has still been named the most pumpkin thing to do in Idaho. I would love to know where we got that. Not entirely sure. We've been able to expand these events year after year with the partnership from the city as well as our event sponsors and unwavering community support. The city's involvement and assistance is crucial to these efforts, and we will continue to act as the liaison between the private sector and the city. We make a strong effort to resolve issues that affect downtown businesses to the best of our ability, and we are very grateful to the city of Lewiston's proactive approach in involving BDL in policy and project development in order for us to disseminate this information to those who may need it. A great example of this would be our current efforts to bring parklets to our downtown to enhance current businesses' need for outdoor seating. For those that may not know what a parklet is, you see them in a lot of small towns, rural towns, where you've got that outdoor patio area right in front of a business. Working with some of those business owners, I have been approached by several other businesses in addition to that who would like to see this come to fruition. BDL, along with myself as a community member, I believe that the city has the power to make this happen sooner than later. A large part of this endeavor is our assistance with the community strategic plan and the encouragement to create dialogue about the importance of the work within it. We will continue to invite ratepayers, business owners, and community members interested in the development and expansion of downtown to attend these public meetings and focus groups for the implementation of this plan. Along with that, I have committed to meeting with city staff and/or the mayor every other month to discuss these initiatives and remain a unified front. These meetings are very valuable to BDL's ability to perform the services outlined in our service contract. We appreciate city staff for giving our organization the opportunity to communicate and maintain an ongoing effort for the vitality of our downtown corridor. Like I had mentioned before, a detailed report will be available to the city and the public within the next couple weeks. I appreciate your patience, your feedback, and your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? I do have one. Are you drafting a new contract for the upcoming year?
Yes, we are working on some of the details that might either be outdated or just need updated on additional services that we provide, and those will be discussed throughout the year before we do come to a final decision on a contract.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry. So there'll be more clarification than-
Absolutely. So the written report goes through the details of our service contract, including numbers, participation, volunteer hours, and then it breaks it down to the four key areas that the service contract dollars go to for our events.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. Oh, Councilor Forsman.
I think this is really important, obviously, to have these detailed explanations of what's going on and what you guys are up to for the public. So I really appreciate you coming down and giving a detailed explanation of what you guys are up to, and hopefully then the office also gets more people involved in the process, so.
Absolutely. And a lot of this information is available on our website. We try to keep that updated as much as possible, especially as it pertains to our service contract with the city. So business owners, property owners are all made aware of where those dollars are going and how impactful it is to our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Morgan.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is a one-page proclamation regarding Arbor Day, declaring April 28th, which is Friday, 2023 is Arbor Day in the city of Lewiston, and I believe Director Tim Barker will be reading that. That is your name. My name is nowhere on this agenda.
Thank you, Council President Littke. Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director for the city. Traditionally, this is something that the mayor or the stand-in for the mayor would read and declare on behalf of the city.
My brother is a silver culturist and knows a lot about trees. I know they are brown on the bottom and green on top, so I think you're way more skilled in this area. I'm going to use my privilege and bow out.
Well, I'll go ahead and read this on behalf of the mayor in his absence. So this is in recognition of the city being a Tree City USA. We just received our 34th year as a Tree City USA, and part of that process, we need to obviously have council read through and have the mayor agree to honor Arbor Day within the city, and so that's what this process is as far as the proclamation. So whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil, by wind and water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are sources of joy and spirited renewal. Now therefore, I, Tim Barker, on behalf of Mayor Daniel Johnson, the city of Lewiston, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Lewiston, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Furthermore, the mayor would urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. dated the 24th day of April 2023.
Thank you, Director Barker. Moving on to letter D, this is an irrigation's restriction, irrigation restrictions update provided by Public Works Director Johnson. Please introduce yourself for the record and the floor drawers.
Good evening. City Council Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Here to share with you an update on irrigation restrictions that are forthcoming within the city of Lewiston. As you are aware, that there was a failure at one of our reservoirs, High Reservoir, on January 18th, 2023, there was eight days of a boil order, and then the city lifted the boil order, and essentially, the city's water system has been operating in that manner since that date. The chart I have up in front is on the Y-axis. On the left is the millions of gallons a day. Across the X-axis on the bottom is the month. And so as you can see the trend line, if you play this out multiple months, this would be an up and down. So that generally shows you how much water is consumed on average. So this is a collection of dates, I think, from 2013 to 2020, and as you can track across, so in January, that is what we call our base demand, so there's no irrigation, there's no swimming pools, just typical household residential water use. And so typically, we're somewhere between 2 million and 3 million gallons a day of base demand, and we have been going along at that rate since then, and our water system can currently sustain that. Unfortunately, the temperatures are getting higher, irrigation demand is going to be ramping up here in the foreseeable future. We typically top out mid-July, early August, as you would expect in the heat of the summer. Our highest demand on one month was just short of 9 million gallons a day. I don't have a precise number to give you as far as how much water our system can provide at this point in the state that it is in, but it is not 9 million gallons. It's probably more than half of that. So staff, since that January 18th date, have been working, working both ends of the candle here, trying to get a solution to this. We want to get irrigation, we want to be able to get the system up and running enough for the peak irrigation demand. I can tell you, as of today, we are weeks away from that. So I have no good news today, other than we are working on it feverishly, trying to find a solution. Within city code, section 36 outlines irrigation restrictions, and according to the code, it is an announcement from the Public Works Director. So that's why tonight is just a announce, or I'm just telling you that tonight. You're not taking any action. It is an action that we will publish tomorrow in the paper notifying the users within a specified area will be on irrigation restrictions. What these irrigation restrictions are, are hand-watering only. You can do a hose with a trigger on it, your typical standout. Once you set it down, it turns off. So hand-watering, pale-watering, drip lines, low-volume water. Our focus, well, the focus is to keep those trees on Arbor Day alive and keep the delicate landscaping taken care of, but high-volume sod, we're talking golf courses, parks, those are not available right now. I will show you the working map currently. This is the zones which are within the irrigation restrictions are basically the same zones that were on that initial boil order. So it's those zones that are impacted by High Reservoir. So anything in North Lewiston or downtown are not fed by that. So they are not on the irrigation restrictions. Anybody in Lloyd, that's a separate system, and obviously, anything on the other side of the river in Clarkson is not within that system. So we are essentially looking at Idaho Street, it's Normal Hill. So as you go along the front of Normal Hill, it is Idaho Street. As you get towards the east, it is Eighth Street, and this is all dictated by the elevation of your house. It is, we've done, we've gone through this, and this is as accurate as we can get as far as the elevation of your service line is dictated whether you're served by High Reservoir or Low Reservoir or North Lewiston. This is an interactive map that will be available for the public. So we're trying to roll this out. These irrigation restrictions will be advertised in the paper tomorrow, noticed at City Hall, put on the website for one week, and they will be in effect May 2nd. Our efforts, obviously, as it's still spring, is to try and get everybody educated as to what these restrictions are, where the restrictions are taking place, and what specific watering activities are allowed. What we're trying to get is the community to understand if the water system is overdrawn, the pipes lose pressure. The pipes, that would then require a boil order until we can return the pressure back there and test and make sure that contaminants were not introduced into the water system. That is the best-case scenario. The worst-case scenario would be there would be a fire during that, and we would have no water pressure to fight fires, or a pipe could collapse. Since the pipes have expanded pressure, negative pressure means the pipe could collapse, and then we recharge it, we have a large water main break. So those are all conditions in which we need to come together as a community to find a way to work through this. I'm confident we will get through this. It's just going to be a matter of time to get the solution in place and get the water back so we can get back to normal irrigation. So I think I have outlined everything that I have to present to you, but I am here for any questions if you have any.
Counselors. Counselor Spickamire?
Thank you. Director, so the map that will be used for the public will be the same one that went out for the boiling order. The reason I ask is some people were confused with the border line.
It is a totally different map. It is based off the same elevations, but since we weren't, we were in a rush at that point. This time, we had the time to go through and check elevation. So we have gone through specifically lot by lot to identify the elevation. So you can query on this map, enter in your address, and it'll put you right on your address and say if you're in or out. And if you can't, if technology is not your strong suit, you can call the city and we will do that for you.
Counselor Towsley?
Thank you. Are you, when you send this out, I think it's important for, I think anybody who understands this will know why we need to do this, but there are going to be people who are oblivious. That's a good word. And what penalties are there in place based on what we have as code? Just to get that on the record.
Yes. So as I've said, our first initial, there is capacity in the system now, and so as it ramps up, our focus will now be just getting the word out there, because I know a lot of people pre-program their sprinklers and have no idea how to do that. So we'll be working with sprinkler systems, with sprinkler companies doing all that. Inevitably, it is an infraction. So the first time it is identified, and you plainly, you know, staff has seen the sprinklers running, we will document it and give the warning. I guess we rely on legal. The second one is, is that the infraction, or is that the third one?
Breandry, Assistant City Attorney. So the first violation would be a written warning. The second violation would be another written warning with the requirement that, informing them that their water may be turned off if they have another violation. The third violation is when an infraction would be issued, and then it would be up to the city on whether they would elect to turn off that person's water.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the infraction is a $300 fine.
Yeah, we need to get that on the record. People need to know about that. That gets some people's attention more.
And I will say on that, you know, the system is at base demand right now, and we have capacity in the system. So as the summer temperatures get higher and usage, even if it's just hand-watering, we will continue to monitor the system, and there may be areas where we get a little bit more flexible and we can allow less restrictions. The opposite could be said, too. If temperatures get too hot, too fast, and our system's shocked, we may have to go into no irrigation, and that would be not what our preference is. But, you know, where we're standing today, we're a lot, we're very weather-dependent and dependent on the public to help us get through this.
Thank you.
Counselor Schroder?
Thank you. Also, Tim, do we have an urban forester?
Director Barker?
Yes or no?
Nothing's easy to answer for me. Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director. We have a city arborist that is on board. That is on board, started a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, because I'm sure Normal Hill, where I live, is in the, okay, yes, thank you. I have four over-100-year-old trees in the right-of-way, the city right-of-way. And how do I know whether I'm going to be able to keep those alive by hand-watering?
I'm going to plead, I don't know.
I know, that's why. I thought maybe I...
If I can interject, Director Barker, could you work with Councilor Schroder on that as it's a personal tree matter?
Yes, we'd be happy to, and work with various media sources, too, to get information out about what watering options there are and how much a tree needs based on size. We could definitely put something together.
Yeah, it's the 100-year-old ones I'm concerned about, the others could be replaced, but those cannot. So, thank you, I'd appreciate that if you have some time. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe it was just a, I misheard, but it sounded like you said the interactive map will be available tomorrow, but only available for a week?
No. It will be available online. And so the website will be having the map as it is updated, because I'm sure we'll find, we found more today of properties that were on the edge, and there's areas that have private wells, or the country club has their own water source. So there's various other, we'll keep it updated and keep it current for the public's use. And we'll also, as updates become available on the progress of getting stored water back in the system, we'll be providing more updates. And so I hope, I hope as temperature rises, progress will continue to move forward on the reservoir, getting it back online. So I'm hoping, today, I can't give you a date. Hopefully, in a month, as temperatures get warmer, I can start telling you, we're getting here, we're getting very close, and I want to get those out to the public, so they understand. You know, we're only going to be putting up with this a few more weeks, or a couple more days, or however long it is.
And then I just, a quick follow-up. You mentioned that if we were to go into a boil order, or our water levels were to decline to a point that it could put firefighting at risk. Are we coming up with alternate solutions as far as, like, I know sometimes we train down on the levee and fill our trucks for training, I mean, are there things that we can do with our water sources to the west and north of us?
Travis Michaelbus, Fire Chief. Yes, we have actually, last, it was a couple of years ago, we put into play with all our mutual aid partners a water shuttle trial to actually get a determination of how we could get adequate water out of the river and supplying it with fireboats, and we have that. So that actually, we put into play the day that the reservoir failure occurred, and we have that. So we'll continue, I've met with the Valley Fire Chiefs, they're aware of this situation coming up. So we do have a contingency plan in place if there were to be something, we just hope we don't get there, because that water supply would not be adequate for a large commercial occupancy, would be handled more of a mid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like for now, you're up.
I will be back next week during work session to give you another update.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to Letter E. Are we getting all the directors tonight? I feel so honored. This is a financial report, six months ended March 31st, 2023 of this fiscal year. This is in accordance with Idaho Code 50-208. This is an oral report from our Treasurer and Director of Finance, Amy Gordon.
Good evening, Council, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer. Tonight, I have for you our March 2023 financial report, which is our quarter ending, our second quarter for the 2003 fiscal year. And I am going to work very hard to keep this brief, you guys have a long agenda, so I just have a couple of items I picked out from the full reports that are in your packet to review with you. So we are 50% through the fiscal year, so we would be looking at our budgets to see where we compare to 50%, if we've spent near or at 50% or in excess. And tonight, I'm just going to kind of focus, I'm just going to focus on two funds that are exceeding the 50%. There is, I think I have an error on my slides, I'll correct that as I go through it, where it says Information Systems, that should say Water Fund, so I apologize for that. The first fund I want to highlight is the Workers' Compensation Fund. And the report that is showing there at the bottom of the screen is where we were at last year. This is a snippet from the March report of last year, where we were at 76.2% of our budget. And I don't know if Council recalls, but last year, we had this like last-minute amendment we had to throw at you a week before the fiscal year ended because of some high claims that we have in our Workers' Comp Fund. And if we look at where we are at year-to-date, we are at 87.4%. So I would expect that we're going to have another large amendment for our Workers' Comp Fund. I don't know what that is yet. I'm going to wait until we get closer to the amendment approval time to formulate that amendment amount. But we have just some claims from prior years that have some very expensive cost associated to them. I think it's really important for Council to know that for the 2023 calendar year, we've only had two claims. So we're trending really well on claims, but we just have some claims related to prior years that are carrying high costs into this year. And if you think back to when we put that emergency amendment in front of Council, we kind of gave a warning that we expected some high claims to roll into this year. So that's just something for Council to be aware of, that that amendment will likely be on your amendment list. And then the other one is the Water Fund, and I kind of highlighted you into that capital section where we're currently exceeding budget. And this has nothing to do with the High Reservoir Emergency. These are amendments that will be on the 23 amendment list for Council to approve later this summer, and these are known amendments, or items that have already gone through Council's approval. And the largest one relates to the construction out at the water plant. When we wrote the 23 budget, we had only projected to have about 4 million left of that project, but when fiscal year 22 ended, we still had about 13 million bond funds to spend. So we need to do a $9 million amendment to get the full amount of the bond proceeds in this year's budget, so we can complete out that project. And the other large amendment related to water is the additional ARPA funds that we were able to receive directly from the state of Idaho. Those were not programmed into those 23 budgets, so those will be, that will be another amendment on Council's list of amendments this summer. So just those two amendments alone are 16 million, and then that will correct where it's appearing like we're over budget, but that's just a timing and formality issue. And that's all I have for Council tonight, unless you have any questions for me.
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Roman numeral five, public hearings and related action items. Letter A is a public hearing. VA-04-2022, Vacation of Public Right-of-Way. Petitioner Dick Goodson, this is accepting testimony on a request to vacate the public right-of-way for an alley located off East Main and east of 30th Street, with the condition that a public utility easement be reserved within the vacated right-of-way area. Floor is yours. But let me probably explain the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. We then have staff presentation, then we will allow for the applicant's testimony or presentation. We will then accept testimony from the public. After that, we will allow for Council questions. No additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed. So this is the time for Council to ask those questions, and then we will allow for the applicant to rebut, and then I will close the public hearing. Mr. Wigan, go ahead.
City Council members, good evening. My name is Mark Wigan, I'm the City Surveyor, and I'm here to present the staff report for VA 04-2022, which is the vacation of a portion of public right-of-way north of East Main. The Council has previously considered this action during the March 13th, 2023 Council session, but due to some complications with the public announcement, we need to conduct an additional public hearing to comply with state code. Just as a quick refresher, the petitioner, Dick Goodson, has requested that a section of 15-foot-wide alley right-of-way that was dedicated to the public as part of the plat of the Porter &amp; Cloud Edition in March of 1906 be vacated to the adjacent landowners. Our research indicates that there was never a road built in this right-of-way, and we cannot find any evidence that it has been used as a public street during that time. All use appears to be by the adjacent landowners for access to their property. The east end of the right-of-way deadens into Lindsay Creek, and the Public Works Department does not foresee any viable option for extending or utilizing this right-of-way for the benefit of the public in the future. An Avista gas line which services the adjacent residences is also located within the right-of-way, so Avista has requested that the utility easement, that a utility easement be retained within the vacated right-of-way, so that they continue to provide service to the residents. And with that, I stand for questions.
All right, so seeing no questions from the Council. Is the applicant here and would like to present any information? Does not look like. With that, is there any testimony from the public regarding this right-of-way vacation? I'm assuming this all looks familiar. All right, well, seeing no questions, no applicant's presentation, and no testimony from the public, we don't need the applicant to rebut, I will close the public hearing. We will move on to Letter B, Resolution 2023-4, Considering Vacating the Public Right-of-Way in VAs-04-2022 and Reserving an Easement. This is an action item, and a motion is in order. Councilor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-4.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Schroder, seconded by Councilor Forsman to approve Resolution 2023-4. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. Oh, it's roll call, I was getting there, I'm reading slow. City Clerk?
Council President Lutke?
Aye.
Council Towesley?
Aye.
Council Forsman?
Aye.
Council Schroder?
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Letter C, Public Hearing. VA-01-2023, Vacation of Public Utility Easement. Petitioners Brad and Jenna Peer, accepting testimony on a request to vacate the southerly five feet of the 10-foot-wide public utility easement located at the north end of Lot 2, Block 2 of the Seaport Second Edition, 1003 Richardson Avenue, so they can use the area to construct a detached shop building on their property. Floor is yours.
Council members, good evening again. Once again, Mark Wigan, City Surveyor. I'm here to present the staff report for VA 01-2023, which is the vacation of a portion of a public utility easement located along the rear property line of 1003 Richardson Avenue. The petitioners, Brad and Jenna Peer, and I should point out at this point that there was a typo in the original resolution. It originally listed Mrs. Peer's name as Angela, that has been corrected. So the actual resolution will be filed, that will be filed, will have the corrected name on it. So Brad and Jenna Peer have requested that five feet of the 10-foot utility easement across the rear of their property be vacated to allow construction of an accessory building closer to the rear lot line than is currently allowed. Although this is another vacation, like the previous action we discussed, it does differ due to the type of right being released. In a public utility easement, each individual serving utility has received a right to utilize the easement area, and so each utility must be, must release their right. In this case, the city, as a serving utility, is being asked to release our right to use the easement, but we are also acting as an intermediary between the applicant and the other serving utilities to facilitate the release of their rights. The subject easement is shown on the plat of the Seaport Second Edition and is composed of 10-foot strips of land across the backs of each of the adjacent lots, creating a 20-foot-wide total easement. The applicant is requesting the vacation of the southerly five feet of the portion on their side of the property line, which would leave 15 feet of the easement remaining. While the remaining 15 feet of easement would still allow utility services to be installed along the back property lines, it is very unlikely it will ever be used, since all of the nearby residences already receive utility services from the public right-of-way in front of their property. All of the serving utilities have signed easement releases and have indicated that the proposed vacation will not adversely affect the continued operation of their utility. With that, I stand for any questions.
Doesn't look to be any questions. Is the applicant present and would like to speak? Welcome, Mr. Peer, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. My name is Brad Peer, and I am the applicant. I'm just here to express my desire for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any testimony from the public? Seeing none, no questions from the Council, we will close this public hearing and move on to Letter D, Resolution 2023-17, Considering Vacation of Portion of Public Utility Easement in VA-01-2023. This is an action item, and a motion is in order. Councilor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-17.
Second.
Been moved by Councilor Schroder, seconded by Councilor Towesley. Clerk Ravencroft, please.
Council President Lutke?
Aye.
Council Towesley?
Aye.
Councilor Forsman?
Aye.
Council Schroder?
Aye.
Council Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Letter E, Public Hearing CPA 23-000002, Accepting Testimony on a Request to Amend the Comprehensive Land Use Designation from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential for 8.96 acres, generally located east of 18th Street, north of Airway Avenue, and south of unimproved Brighton Avenue. Katie is going to do a short presentation, I believe. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, and Katie, floor is yours.
Good evening, Counselors. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant City Planner. So staff report was already presented at a previous council meeting on March 27th. There were two questions that were asked by the Council. So one of those items were how much space in the city is in the R3 zone, which is the medium-density residential zone, which the applicant is requesting rezoned to be done to. Those maps were included in your packets with all of the various areas outlined with the R3 in blue. The other question that was asked was a question about Neighborhood 7. I don't have digital maps, I just have this map that shows our Neighborhood 7 outlined in yellow. So Neighborhood 7 is where the area the applicant is requesting to be rezoned and comprehensive map be amended to that medium density rather than the low density that is currently listed. And I can bring this around if the Counselors would like to see it closer. And other than that, I would stand for questions.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
What's the little dark spot?
What's the little dark spot?
That is public, I believe. Yep, that's where Tamla Elementary is located. So the purple is public lands.
Any other questions from the council? Follow-up, councilor.
Katie, also, one of the questions I think that was asked last time was about the R3, was are there any R3 variances in Neighborhood 7?
Not that I'm aware of currently, no. I think the closest, like mentioned at the previous public hearing, is the planned unit development that is to the north of the subject property, Canyon Crest Estates, which has a mix of lot sizes and densities.
And maybe I should just clarify, this is for the comprehensive plan amendment?
Correct. This is asking that the current comprehensive plan map zoning or map designation, which is currently low-density, be amended to medium-density for the subject property.
And only the subject property?
And only the subject property.
Meaning that we will address rezone later on? Any other questions from the council? Counselor Towesley.
Yeah, I'm... This was at the... What was this meeting? This one was initially brought?
March 27th.
March 27th, okay. And I was not in attendance. I've read this packet, but I've not watched the... What was taken, what was done during that? And for that reason, I think I probably should recuse myself. Because I think what happened is that I got the wrong one. I focused on the wrong stuff for this meeting, for this particular packet.
The packet information was the same from the previous meeting to this meeting with the addition of those R3 maps.
Yeah, but I was urged, I think, to also watch the televised, and I did not do that.
Okay.
So...
Yes, but let's close the public hearing first.
My applicant is here, if he was having a question.
Yes, okay. Sorry, I thought you meant like right now.
No.
Excuse me. Any further questions from council? Thank you, Katie. And at this time, we would allow the applicant to come forward if he so chooses. Present any information?
Hi, I'm Dan Young, 247 Thane. Yeah, this went on March 27th, and I was unfortunately out of town, and it went so smoothly at P&amp;Z. I didn't think it necessary to have a representative here, but I was obviously mistaken. So I apologize for my attire tonight. I just came from baseball practice, so I barely made it here. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, sorry. I don't know if they pertain now because we're not... Maybe I misunderstanding, but we're just looking at just this one and not a rezone. So I think our questions were more centered towards the rezone last time. Am I incorrect on that?
All three.
All three.
Isn't it the comp plan, the rezone, and?
Yes, so I'll ask a question. Maybe that'll help move this along. Is there a particular reason you chose to go the route of comp plan instead of just rezone and like maybe CUP?
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Or a conditional use or a rezone change? You know, like what drove you to the comprehensive plan first step route? I think that's where some of our questions came from last meeting.
I might need some help on that. Without short of throwing Katie or Joel in front of a bus, I think I'll abstain from answering.
The applicant's request to go to a medium-density residential designation requires that we amend the comprehensive plan map first, and then council can consider the rezone to that same medium-density residential zone. Currently, the comprehensive plan map is for low-density residential designation. So in order to go to the medium-density residential designation, you have to amend the comprehensive plan map first, and then you can assign it an associated zoning district. Does that make sense? Sort of, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I kind of knew that, but I didn't really know that. So now we're both educated on the process.
And I apologize. There was some discussion that there could have been a different process. So we just wanted to kind of clarify. And unfortunately, the councilor that had the bulk of those conversations and my questions were answered previously. So I think we're good unless anybody has any new questions. We appreciate that you've made your way down here.
Thank you.
And that you are coaching young people. Thank you. All right. Is there any testimony from the public? Clerk Ravencroft?
I don't have any testimony. It's for the zone change.
Correct, okay, thank you. Just making sure. All right, seeing no testimony from the public, there's no need for applicant's rebuttal. I will close this public hearing and move on to Letter F, Resolution 2023-16, considering implementing the city's decision in CPA 23-000002, amending the future land use map, Neighborhood Number 7, East Orchards of Chapter 6.7 of Lewiston's Comprehensive Land Use Plan, an action item. And a motion is in order.
Where are we? A motion to approve Resolution... No, 2023, we've already done.
2023-16.
Okay, there we go. Sorry. A motion... May I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-16?
Still moved.
We have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Counselors Spicklemeyer. Any discussion? I would just say, again, I think the questions that came about from myself in the last meeting was that the fact that we were in the middle of the beginning of a new, an updated comprehensive plan and that Neighborhood 7 was originally planned to be where animal rights and such were. So but having the large in-person map to show how large of a neighborhood that is and that this is only applicable to this particular parcel, I'm good with moving forward. Counselor Spicklemeyer?
President Liddkey, I agree 100%. That was my concern as well. I think that when I read through the old comprehensive plan from Neighborhood 7, it's a lot of the stuff is very outdated. I think with the expansion of Lewiston, that's the natural growth is out everywhere included within Neighborhood 7. So I think this is appropriate, and I do think it needs to be updated to accommodate things like this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Clerk Ravencroft?
Council President Liddkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley. Oh, excuse me. Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
And I'll just pause quickly to clarify with city council, legal council, do we need to vote for his recusal, or was his explanation enough?
No, his explanation was sufficient. He will be noted as an abstention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for letting us know that Counselor Towesley. Moving on to Letter G, Public Hearing, ZNC 23-000002, accepting testimony on a request to rezone approximately 8.96 acres generally located east of 18th Street, north of Airway Avenue, and south of unimproved Brighton Avenue from suburban residential R-1 Zone to medium-density residential R-3 Zone. Note to council, information for this item is included under Item Roman numeral 5, Letter E. I will again open the public hearing. We will allow Katie to present. The applicant is again then welcome to present, testify on his behalf. We will open it up for testimony from the public. Then we will allow for council questions. And just a reminder, no additional evidence or testimony may be received once this public hearing is closed. So this is the time to present questions and information that you might have. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner. Again, original presentation was given on March 27th. ZNC 23, number 2, is to rezone the 8.96 acres that was just changed on our comprehensive plan by you to the R3 medium-density residential zone. And I would stand for questions.
What was the... I don't... Maybe we...
Counselor Forsman?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know you were... For the animal rights, did we answer whether that was going to be affected? I'm sorry if I missed that.
So for this particular property, yes. The lot sizes... Well, R3 zone does not have animal rights. Our F2, R1, which is suburban residential, and R2A with a conditional use permit are the zones where animal rights are allowed as long as you have at least half an acre of dedicated pasture area. Unless you want chickens. Everyone can have chickens.
So it won't affect the surrounding area, just basically his parcel?
Correct, just the applicant's property.
Okay, thank you.
And Katie, can you... Does that map have a total acreage by any chance?
You know, I don't think it does, and I didn't have time to... I would have to like individually go add them up. So no, unfortunately, I do not know what the total acreage is of the neighborhood. And it actually doesn't... The map is so old that it does not encompass the Canyon Crest Estates, which has been annexed into the city since the comprehensive plan was adopted in 1999. It's outlined in pencil.
Other questions for Katie?
None pertaining to the citizen comment, so I don't know. Because we have to read that first.
Yep. We will move on then if the applicant would like to testify as to the particular topic, which is the rezone, which I believe at this time, he could speak to his proposed development, correct? If he chose to, right? Okay. This would be that time if you wanted to talk about the R3, the buildings that you plan on developing.
Okay. Dan Young, 247 Thane, Lewiston. So we looked at doing the PUD, which is what Canyon Crest did. And having personally done a PUD for our subdivision at Northeast Crossing and working with Joel and Katie over the years, I just... I feel like staying inside the lines, which is a standard subdivision, is much easier than going the PUD route. To be honest, I'm not sure I completely understand the necessity of a PUD. It's basically, here's the subdivision rules. I kind of like them, but I want to change these things. And so then it turns into a negotiation of, I can do this lot smaller and that lot bigger or whatever. But you know, the city standards are written to stay inside the lines. So rather than reinvent the wheel and do the PUD and get into a negotiation, I just chose to go to the standard zone change. And for that reason, it allowed me to do these townhomes that we're looking at doing. And I was encouraged by city staff to not give all the details of the entire subdivision and what I was planning on doing. But I already had it drawn, and I thought, let's just get it on the table now. So we're building duplex-type units, but they'll be townhomes with a zero lot line, connected common wall, individually-deeded property. We will have covenants. The covenants are protective, not overly restrictive. You got to have fenced area to park stuff next to your house. You have to conceal anything that you want to park next to your house. You can't have your car up on blocks in the driveway. You know, those kind of standard things. We're going to go ahead and put that in the covenants. So the reason, I think, to answer the question is that we just want to do the standard subdivision. Standard lot sizes, we're not asking for any exceptions. We thought that would be cleaner for the city staff to prepare, for the engineer to do the work on, and for the council to approve.
Questions for the applicant? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steele. So in the package you included, as you just mentioned, you included your preliminary plat designs. And was that just for incremental item? That isn't to be considered in this approval?
No, yeah, we got a ways to go before we get to the plat process. But we had it all drawn up, and that's what we're planning on doing. So we just went ahead and showed the building outlines and the approximate property lines where we're planning to go. Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forsman?
So are you hearing people that are needing this type of... Or preferring this type of development within the city?
It's... So is the question, why am I doing this?
Well, yeah, like there are a lot of public kind of coming or that you've seen that are more drawn to this type of development or kind of... So yeah, I guess why?
So in the development world, the dollars drive everything, right? So the spot where we are in the economy with increasing prices of labor and materials, increasing interest rates, the price point has to stay the same or come down. It's impossible to sustain that price point that has happened for the last 12 to 18 months. And so we're just trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve. We usually do a little bit bigger lots in these. The other subdivisions we've done, you know, they've been 7,000 to 9,000 square foot lots. These lots are, you know, 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. And the reason that we had to do more lots is just to keep the total cost down. We're doing a common wall, which helps to save money. So our goal is to price point, hopefully in the low 300s or high 200s for starting prices, which that's where the, you know, the center of the bell curve in the city of Lewiston right now for new home sales or existing home sales is around 360,000 to 370,000. So if you get much past that, it's hard to find buyers. And so we're doing the subdivision because we build houses. That's the purpose of the subdivision. And we're doing more lots and little smaller units to keep that price point down, just to appeal to the masses, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Yes, Director Groh. Thought you were telling me to quiet the crowd or something. I apologize if I...
Community Development Director Groh, I just wanted to remind the council that there's a reason why staff discourages including those types of information or those details in these applications, and it's because you're approving a zone change. And so you are not approving what Mr. Young has provided. You are approving a change of zone that allows all of those uses within that zone. So not that he will, but he could change his mind. So you have to look at everything that's allowed in that zone and make your decision based on that.
Thank you, Director. Is that clear to council? Everybody knows what's allowed in R3? Or would you like that explained? Or would you like that explained? Okay, we're good. I believe that's all the questions for the applicant. Yes? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Young. This time, we would accept any public testimony. Now, Counselor, Clerk Ravencroft, please.
I did receive one comment from Brian Steele, 1927 Burl Avenue. I wish to say that I am neutral on this zone change, but do question the procedure that is taking place in that you are also reviewing a proposed draft of the preliminary plat for this property at the same time. A question down the road could be that if the final plat is different than the proposed draft preliminary plat, is the rezoning valid if passed? However, we are against the vacating of a portion of Brighton Avenue. Since you are all looking at and studying that proposed plat, I ask that you look at the proposed vacating a portion of Brighton Avenue. This vacate would only take place on the portion of Brighton Avenue that is, I believe is supposed to be contiguous with this zone change property. Currently, Brighton Avenue is a straight and direct east-west public right-of-way between 18th Street and 19th Street. In the proposed draft plat in your packets, the developer wishes to basically move that right-of-way to the east portion of a subdivision running at north and south off of Airway Avenue and reconnect back onto Brighton Avenue on the east side of a subdivision. My wife and I own about seven acres just east of this proposed subdivision in the same city block. We are both totally against this vacate and the realigning of Brighton Avenue. In the future, if we or anyone else would develop this parcel, the only way to access Brighton Avenue from 18th Street would be to weave through the subdivision and make a hard right turn onto Brighton Avenue. We would no longer have a straight access as is shown on our plat and do not want this other type of access to happen. This would be a detriment to our property and very likely would greatly reduce the value of this property if homeowners were expected to access their homes this way. The city has already made a cluster of this area as they let Canyon Crest Estates be built to the north of these properties and did not follow their own policies concerning how developments need to be built out so main roads like Brighton Avenue can serve as front yards on both sides of the street. However, if the city would vacate all of Brighton Avenue between 18th Street and 19th Street, then we would go along with that as we would access our parcel from Airway Avenue and come off Burl Avenue on the 19th Street right-of-way. I may be addressing this issue prematurely, but wanted to express our concerns for this item now and for future meetings.
Thank you. Katie?
Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner. So vacations are separate applications and do have their own public hearings. So if there is a request for vacation of Brighton Avenue right-of-way, Mr. Young would come in front of this body again with a separate application for that specific item. Just wanted to make that clear, that that's not part of what you were deciding on tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other public testimony? Seeing none, we do offer the ability to rebut, although we have had clarification that that would be a separate thing brought in front of the council. So we can move on if you give me the head nod. All right? Thank you. I will close this public hearing and we will move on to letter H, ordinance 4880, first reading, implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 23-000002, declaring that certain real property be removed from the suburban residential R1 Zone and included in the medium-density residential R3 Zone and amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston, an action item. I'm assuming we can skip this staff report. I'll take another nod. Thank you. And I would say that the motion is in order. Counsel President? Just Counselor today, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Counselor Schroder?
Motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance number 4880.
Second.
There's a second? It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4880. Is there any discussion? Any amendments? Oh, excuse me. Counselor Towesley?
I'm just making it clear that I have to abstain from this vote as well.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Any amendments? Seeing none. This is a voice vote. So all those in favor of motion to approve, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. And so four ayes and one abstention. Motion passes. City Clerk, would you please read the title?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4880, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 23-000002, declaring that certain real property be removed from the suburban residential R1 Zone and included in the medium-density residential R3 Zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Ravencroft. Moving on to Roman numeral six, the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless a counselor so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Are there any items wished to be removed? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, wait.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Counselor Towesley moves. Counselor Schroder, would you like to second that?
I second that. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving along. We will do a roll call vote if there is no discussion on that motion.
Counsel President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forzeman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Roman numeral seven, active agenda. Letter A, comprehensive plan services agreement amendment. Considering approval of the comprehensive plan services agreement amendment, this is an action item. And I believe City Planner Joel Plaskon is here. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and tell us what we're voting on, please.
Thank you. I'm Joel Plaskon, Lewiston City Planner, presenting for your consideration tonight an amended scope of services agreement, or contract, if you will, with Logan Simpson Design. They're the consultant that the city contracted with at the end of last year to rewrite the city's comprehensive plan, which is our long-range growth plan. Since we contracted with them for that project, we became aware of a grant from the Blue Cross of Idaho Health Foundation. We applied for that grant and we were awarded the full grant amount of $30,000 to incorporate a health component into our new comprehensive plan. That health component will address seven different areas of types of health in the community. That component will require additional work on the part of the consultant. And so we would like to take that health grant money, that $30,000, and use it to pay Logan Simpson to do the work associated with incorporating the health component into the comprehensive plan. That warrants an amendment to the services agreement to reflect that work and to reflect the changed cost. So that's what's being presented to you for your consideration and approval tonight.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? Counselor Forzeman?
Can you maybe explain just a little, just a tad bit on why we outsourced this and the purpose and the benefit for the public?
Sure. It's a huge project. It's an extremely heavy lift. We're doing this over the course of 18 months. It is standard practice nowadays for cities and counties both to contract out comprehensive plans, which are plans that are required by the state of Idaho for local communities to have. But it's a very time-intensive type of work. And we simply don't have the staffing resources to devote to that large of a project and do it solely in-house. It just wouldn't be possible.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I do have one. I'm just, I'd have to, give me a nod, Director Gordon, but with this grant, we would also be doing an amendment to the budget, correct? At that same time, we do all the others. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Motion is in order. I will pick whoever's hand I see first. Anybody?
I would probably...
Counselor Towesley?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the amendment to the services agreement between the city of Lewiston and Logan Simpson Design Incorporated.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Forzeman to approve the amendment to the service agreement between the city of Lewiston and Logan Simpson Design. This is a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk Ravencroft?
Counsel President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forzeman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Motion passes. Moving on to letter B on the active agenda, resolution 2023-9. This is considering accepting a public wastewater utility and access easement for Alexander Investors LLC to the city of Lewiston. This is an action item. And Director Johnson, you have the floor.
Good evening. City Council, Dustin Johnson Public Works Director. In front of you tonight for your consideration is, as you've just outlined, a sewer easement on basically what is the Bargain Hunter Mall lot on Main Street. So this is just another one of those small dominoes that are starting to fall into place for the, what we're calling the Main Street Reconstruction Project. So part of the effort to reduce the scope and price of that is to try and find a way to bypass the sewer flow that is going beneath Main Street. So we needed to find a bypass route that would run straight north under the railroad tracks to the bypass, which at that point, we can construct a line that would gravity flow to the lift station that runs it underneath the river to the wastewater treatment plant. This was after the wastewater master plan. We found this route. We started negotiations with the owner of the Bargain Hunter Mall, who just happens to be doing some major renovations on the site. Coordinated with them, they said, hey, we're just going to make that a parking lot. If you wanted to run this line underneath the parking lot before we put the parking lot on top, that'd be great. So that's what we have here for you tonight, is the easement to allow that to happen. I am here for questions.
Counselors, any questions? It's a great explanation for us, Lehman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is in order. Counselor Schroder?
Thank you. I move to approve resolution 2023-9.
Been moved by Counselor Forzeman, excuse me, Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forzeman to approve resolution 2023-9. Any discussion? Clerk Ravencroft?
Counsel President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forzeman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to letter C, under the act agenda. These are ordinances. Number one is first reading. Letter A is ordinance number 4881, amending section 2-42C1 of the Lewiston City Code to expand the membership of the Public Works Advisory Commission, amending section 2-49, letter I, number one, of the Lewiston City Code to include stormwater. This is an action item. And Director Johnson, you should be ecstatic that this has become so popular.
Good evening, City Council. Dustin Johnson Public Works Director for you tonight. Of all the words that I spew in front of you and make you read, three words tonight, just changing five to seven and adding stormwater to the scope of the Public Works Advisory Committee. As you've already said, we took plenty of time to try and get this board formed. Once we started getting traction, we have, the board is full and kind of looking at how the city runs some of our other advisory boards. We have two city council members and three at-large public members. And so our interest would be to just expand it a little bit more, up to seven members of the public to participate in this. And we already have one application in the queue and a few other people who would be interested in applying once these positions, or these two positions would be available. Just point of order is that we did have our first meeting and it was very productive. And so we're all very excited to have this board up and running. And we have lots of stuff for them to review and provide comment on. So, thank you.
Director Johnson? Any questions? I would say a motion is in order. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4881.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forzeman to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4881. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Proper English for the most part. Are there any amendments? Seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. City Clerk, we'll read the title, please.
Approving, excuse me, approving the first reading of ordinance 4881, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending section 2-42C1 of Lewiston City Code to expand the membership of the Public Works Advisory Commission, amending section 2-49IF of the Lewiston City Code to include stormwater and providing an effective date.
Moving on to number two, under ordinances, second and third readings. Letter A is ordinance number 4873. This is amending section 8-22 of the Lewiston City Code to amend, add, and delete definitions related to dogs, amending section 8-31 to add an aggressive dog at large provision and the associated penalty, amending section 8-43 to remove the penalty for dogs at large, amending section 8-45 related to vicious dogs. This is an action item. I would. Counselor Schroder?
I didn't see any other ahs, did I? I'll make a motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4873.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schroder and Forzeman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Will I continue?
You certainly may.
Motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4873.
Second.
Again, been moved by Counselor Schroder and seconded by Counselor Forzeman to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4873. Is there any discussion on this motion? Any amendments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. City Clerk will read the title if she wants to.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4873, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending section 8-22 of the Lewiston City Code to amend, add, and delete definitions related to dogs, amending section 8-31 to add an aggressive dog at large provision and the associated penalty, amending section 8-43 to remove the penalty for dogs at large, amending section 8-45 related to vicious dogs and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Moving on to letter B, under second and third readings, ordinance number 4877. This is implementing the city council's decision in ANX-23-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston city limits. Counselor Towesley?
I'd like to make a motion to combine the second and third readings and to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4877.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Towesley and seconded by Counselor Schroder. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Continue on?
I would also make a motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4877.
Second.
Again, been moved by Towesley, seconded by Schroder to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4877. Is there any discussion or amendments? Seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Aye, motion passes. Clerk Ravencroft.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4877, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, implementing the city council's decision in ANX-23-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston City Limits and providing an effective date.
Moving on to item number three. This is the adoption and approval of ordinance summaries. Letter A is ordinance 4873. Letter B is ordinance 4877. I would entertain a motion. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Motion to adopt ordinance numbers 4873 and 4877 and approve the related ordinance summaries.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Towesley. There any discussion? Seeing none. This is a roll call vote.
Council President Liddkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to letter D, Resolution 2023-14, considering implementing the city council's decision in CPA 23-000001, amending to neighborhood number seven, East Orchard Maps of, amending to neighborhood number seven, East Orchard Maps of Chapter 6.7 of Lewiston's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This is an action item and I would entertain a motion.
Counselor Liddkey.
Counselor Forsman.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-14.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to approve Resolution 2023-14. This is a roll call vote.
Council President Liddkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion passes. Letter E, ordinances. Number one, second and third reading, readings. Letter A, ordinance 4878, implementing the city's decision in ZNC-23-000001, declaring that certainly, certainly, certain newly annexed real property be included in the City of Lewiston suburban residential R1 zone, amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston. This time, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4878.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Spicklemeyer, seconded by Counselor Towesley to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Want to continue on?
Yep. And motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4878.
Second.
Second from Counselor Towesley. Been moved and seconded to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4878. Is there any discussion? I would just say really quickly, I just appreciate that the council has taken the time to ask questions and although we don't like to prolong the movement of government, I do appreciate that we had those questions and that the staff came through and answered those clearly. So I just want to make that note that I think that is our job and sometimes it does create a little road bump, but I think we moved through it quickly. Are there any amendments? Seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Clerk Ravencroft.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4878, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, implementing the city council's decision in ZNC-23-000001, declaring that certain newly annexed real property be included in the City of Lewiston suburban residential R1 zone, amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Bless you. Moving on to letter B, ordinance 4879, amending Section 39-1 of the Lewiston City Code to update the City of Lewiston area of city impact boundary map. This is an action item. Counselor Schroeder.
Thank you. I move to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4879.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Towesley to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4879. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Counselor Schroeder.
Motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4879.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Towesley to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4879. Are, is there any discussion? Are there any amendments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. City Clerk, please.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance 4879, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, amending Section 39-1 of the Lewiston City Code to update the City of Lewiston area of city impact boundary map and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Moving on to number two, adoption and approval of ordinance summaries. Letter A is ordinance number 4878. Letter B is ordinance 4879. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Motion to adopt ordinance numbers 4878 and 4879 and approve the related ordinance summaries.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Towesley. Been moved to adopt ordinance numbers 4878 and 4879 and approve the related ordinance summaries. This is a roll call.
Council President Liddkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Letter F is reason statement, Skyview Estates, considering approval of the reason statement for ZNC-23-00001. You were given a copy of those reason statement questions. Kayla, did you want us to have any certain amount of conversation or specific to any particular?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. So council has been provided a copy of the proposed reason statement. If council believes that that is sufficient and doesn't have any changes, council could simply vote to adopt the reason statement as written. Alternatively, if council has amendments or wants to see any changes in there, you are welcome to make those changes through a motion to amend and then you could adopt the reason statement. Or if you think that we need to start from scratch, you can direct us to do that as well.
Counselors? Counselor Schroeder.
Um, I, as I read through this, I, I find it to be very acceptable and I would approve it.
You'd like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the relevant criteria and standards of when considering the zone change.
Second.
Just to clarify, that is to approve the reason statement for specifically ZNC-23-00001, correct?
Okay.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
If anything, just clarification.
Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer to approve the reason statement for ZNC-23-00001. All those in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to Roman numeral eight. Items moved from the consent agenda that were none, so we'll move on to Roman numeral nine. Unfinished and new business. Letter A is city councilor comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that may come before city council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion.
Uh, Counselor Liddkey.
Counselor Forsman.
I'm going to be trying a new thing where I highlight some businesses that have come into the valley. I won't, I got a list from Carrie Ravencroft, but it's pretty big. So I'm not going to read the whole thing. But I'm going to try to highlight some businesses and obviously if those who are listening want their business to be highlighted, I will do so. Just one second and I will get there. Uh, we have Five Acre Agriculture that has come in starting 2/16 of this year. Apple Pie was also this, uh, February of this year. Um, let's see, Hills Canyon Sprinklers, Hemlock Homes, Idaho Floors &amp; More, Pedal for the Soul, Hoy Idaho Inc., and Stork Care. Those are a couple. There's a big list of a lot of new businesses and the reason I'm doing this, let me explain that, is that so citizens can see and hear about the new businesses that are coming in and the growth that is happening. So these were all from February. There's also even more from February and as well as from the last three months. But it's a, it's a long list, like I said. So I just wanted to highlight some of those.
Counselor Forsman, anybody else? Counselor Schroeder.
Thank you. Um, I hope that we all got to go to the Dogwood Festival and enjoyed the beautiful days that we had. Um, I was a part of the comprehensive, I am part of the comprehensive task to rewrite that. And we did a public outreach and we were really fairly well attended that way. The people that we would stop walking by, they seemed eager to support that. And so I, I think we have something like 400 surveys that are remaining and our boards were all full. And so I think it was, I think it was a good turnout and a good outreach that we presented to the public. And, and I hope a lot of people share that with their friends and families.
Um, I will just quickly, and I apologize for not doing this earlier. Um, Counselor Kleberg is not here tonight. He's excused and then the mayor is out of town. We hope to see them both back for our May work session, I believe. Currently, the mayor is in the air, probably not watching the meeting, but I'm sure we'll read through notes as soon as he gets on land. And then I would just also echo Counselor Schroeder's comments in regards to the comprehensive plan. Uh, I don't think you have to run for office to necessarily be involved. I think you can participate in something as simple as a survey. But also, I would just encourage people to get out and ask questions, contact each and every one of us. And the staff is honestly really great about their turnaround of answering questions. And I think that's why we all chose to run. So, and this is a big deal. I, I think when we talk about the future of Lewiston, we need to make sure our voice is heard so that as this thing comes to fruition that we are using that and our strategic plan to really make things happen for our city. So I appreciate the work being done. I did take some pictures of comments on the board at Art Under the Elm. Some were fairly comical. I did save one in particular in reference to us and I'll share that with the counselors later. And, but again, I, I think we're moving in the right track and I appreciate the city staff work on that. And I'm, I'm actually very excited about the health aspect's going to be addressed. So if there are no further comments, we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Towesley.
I was just waiting until everybody was...
Okay, you may have the last word, sir.
Well, thank you. Um, on Thursday, here at our library, there was a presentation by LC's Early Childhood Group and they, they presented a video and it was called No Small Matter. And it's, you know, you always hear the thing about canaries in the coal mine. But one of the things that we deal with now is, is learning about brain education and brain, brain science and about things that, that we didn't know 10 years ago, 20 years ago about the human brain and that babies start learning at birth. It used to be that they'd give them, you know, six months, three months, something, then they'd start focusing in and start doing things. And we have all kinds of research that shows that they start learning from day one. And the first three years, the most critical part of that. We have a childcare crisis right now because of, it's so expensive for people to get quality childcare. And it's a two-edged sword because people who go to school to get, to pay, to become childcare specialists are paid abysmally small wages to where they have to have second jobs and many times, they just simply leave, leave the profession. It's an unfortunate thing. But it talked about stress on children, children who are not soothed as babies and the things that they deal with as this continues to build and build. And as a former elementary teacher, I saw the results of these kinds of things with the kinds of behaviors that I would witness in classrooms and in hallways and in playgrounds. And it was, it's a, it's an important issue that will continue to become more and more important. On a lighter side, on Saturday, I had the honor of being part of a large group of, of a choir that was made up of high school and junior high students and also the LC Concert Choir, along with a group called Men's Ensemble Northwest, which is an a cappella group. And, and we worked all day at developing three songs to be presented, one of them being the new arrangement of LCSC's Alma Mater, which was really well, well received and it was a lot of fun to do. Um, and the Men's Ensemble Northwest was an amazing group. They're extremely talented people and it was just an awful lot of fun. And you could see the enthusiasm in these young vocalists' eyes. I, it was ironic that I was sitting next to junior high kids all day because they were just as squirrely as I was as a seventh grader. So I earned it, I guess, to be by them. But they were wonderful and they did a great job at the concert. One other thing is that we have a concert coming up. LC's Concert Choir has a, has a concert on Tuesday at 7:30 and it's called Sounds of Scotland. There will be lots of good sounds there. Um, all songs are Scottish theme. There'll be a presenter of Bagpipes. I don't remember his, his name right now. So we hope that you will come in attendance and if you have, if you have Scottish design, a tartan of some type, please wear it proudly and come to this. And this will be at 7:30 at LC's very own Silverthorn Theater, which is really a gem for us here in the valley. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
We've actually made great time on seven pages of, so if you wanted to show us a little of that baritone, I would gladly let, leave you the floor. Okay, I won't do that. Uh, all right. No other comments. Uh, we'll move on to letter B, city boards and commission liaison updates.
Counselor Liddkey.
Counsel Forsman.
Uh, so I have not been the greatest at sharing information on my Lewiston Emergency Medical Service Advisory Board as the liaison. So I have vowed to try to do better at that. Uh, we only have these meetings not very often. So I kind of, I think, forget to mention them as often. Uh, the one thing that did stand out and I had asked them about bringing up was the community paramedic. This isn't something that we're doing, but it is something that some cities have adopted. Um, and I'm hoping I don't botch it. So I'm going to try to describe it as best possible. Uh, this is a way for citizens to get assistance at home. Uh, it could be if they need help with their medications, sorting through them, making sure they're taking them, going to doctor's appointments, maybe them coming and saying, hey, you missed your doctor's appointment. How can I help you get there? Uh, this could be helping them decide if this is an emergency or in a non-emergency situation. So maybe they can help them at home and not needing to transport them to the hospital, which helps in return limit the amount of people that are in the hospital as well as sick people in the emergency room. Um, it's, so it's kind of a win-win there because it went for you. So you get to stay home and hopefully limit the exposure of being sick as well as not bringing it to the emergency room. Uh, this is, they're kind of trying it. I believe Seattle's one city I know of, I know there's, I think a Sultan has tried something like that. Uh, Clarkson, excuse me. And this would be something after hearing a lot on it and I highly suggest that you look into it if you're curious about it more because it's, it's kind, you kind, there's a lot that goes into it so that I could talk about it for a while. But it's, I think would be benefit to Lewiston. But it's, I think would be benefit to Lewiston. It would probably need be partnership with the hospitals to make it happen with the city of Lewiston, so it would kind of trying to figure out how that would work and, and how the funds would work with that. So I just wanted to share that with the community. That is something that's being talked about and how that would possibly happen. So if you have more questions about that, you can also ask me or email me and I will refer you to those who know more. So thank you for letting me share that.
Counselor Schroder.
Thank you. I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more on Director Johnson's input on our Public Works Advisory Commission, our PWAC acronym. We had election of officers, we adopted our bylaws, we had discussions on initial focus of the commission. We got into agenda topics, so we really are rolling along and we're so excited to have this up and running. Three years I've been appointed to this and it's finally happened. So this has been great.
I'll just speak briefly as to the joint powers for just lost it. The emergency, why is that? Chief Michael Bus.
Advisory Board.
Thank you, communications. I'm lacking this. We will be working on the budget soon and I just really quickly, one of the things that being on that particular board has brought to my attention is the, the need of dispatchers and also the need of us to show respect. And I was really, it was really neat to, a couple of weeks ago, get to honor our dispatchers. In fact, our organization at OUI took it upon themselves at each of our locations to reach out to both county and city dispatchers and show appreciation because we happen to use 911 probably more often than most. So it was, they do work that I think we just absolutely must recognize along with so many others, but I'm, I'm really happy to see what we're doing in, within that to really bring quality dispatch and lightening their load with some advances and, and hopefully can see some things through with our budget. And also just the disability advisory commission, really addressing needs of our community as a whole. When we talk about access points and ADA compliance, that doesn't just serve somebody in a wheelchair, but it does serve somebody that's utilizing a walker, somebody that has a bad hip. It really is beneficial to the entire community and so I appreciate that they are looking at these things and having communication with them, among themselves and trying to bring resources and then also push the staff to bring information to them and, and you know, get creative. And then just the airport board is moving on some projects. We will be hearing from them at the May work session and I believe if I remember correctly, Kerry, he stayed in an hour, so we will be getting a full in-depth, so I'm not going to get into the great detail, but I, I do also just feel that there's some real asset there that we need to pay attention to as a council, so. All right, we good? Moving on, we will skip mayor comments. Letter D is advisory board and commission updates and we have no appointments necessarily tonight. Letter E, agenda topics. Anybody? Let's, let's just spend the next few months on the budget. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved by somebody and seconded by another councillor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Well done.